If you will please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation. Reverend Nelson.
Father, we thank you for a time such as this that all things be done in order and that's the way you see fit. And as we come closer to street fair, that everything goes according to plan safely and in order, and we thank you and also ask for protection for our first responders as we go forward. Amen.
Thank you. Mike, if you will please take the roll.
Councilman Wirtzbacher.
Present.
Councilman Lloyd. Councilman Schlack.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Here.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilwoman Nick.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
A motion by Mr. Schlack. Second by everybody. Mr. Valerius.
Thank you.
Any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July 8th meeting?
Motion.
Go ahead.
I have Wirtzbacher and Barr. Any corrections? If there are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved. Now we come to presentations, and this evening we'll start out with Police Chief Phelps.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, elected officials. This is a co-presentation. We're starting with the award, Citizens Award. Are we doing promotions first?
We've got the promotion.
I'm sorry.
We didn't send you the agenda.
Sorry. I'm nervous. We have two officers being promoted. One was a sergeant to a lieutenant. I'll introduce Adam Winger. He joined the department 2016. He's been on the SWAT team since his third year, second year in the department. He's a vital part of our training staff. He's an arms instructor. He will be a future leader of this department. He was first on the lieutenant's test, or the last test taken. He is now becoming a lieutenant. We have Zachary Wara. He came on the department in 2016 as well. He's an FTO, or was an FTO. Most supervisors, you know, turn that over. He's an arms instructor. He's a vital part of midnights. He's been a fixture on midnight since he's joined the force, which we're proud of that because it's sometimes difficult to get someone to work midnights. These two supervisors on top of the ones I have, I said the last one, I meant that, I mean this, these are the future of our department. With these, we have one more piece of the puzzle to put in place later this year, and we're going to be the strongest this department, in my opinion, has ever been as far as command on down to officers. These two are vital pieces of the pie, and I want to congratulate Zach Wara myself. They both, after they take their oath of office, are going to have family members or friends pin them with their badge.
Awesome.
And then you guys have done this, just say I do, I swear, I affirm at the end, okay? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration from the affair, of the affairs of the city of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of police sergeant and police lieutenant to the best of your abilities, so help you God? All right, congratulations.
Now, before anybody leaves or does a lot of picture-taking, we would like them to remain and let the council members address them, if they would please. And we'll start with Mr. Barr.
Gentlemen, I want to say thank you for what you're doing. It's an honorable step. I too, as you probably know, was in law enforcement. Please keep the badge shiny. Thank you.
Again, thank you so much, congratulations. Also want to thank your families. In my eyes, it's, if not, the toughest job out there, and we appreciate your commitment and service to the citizens of Allen Park, but also, in the strongest sense, your family's support in your endeavor and your careers. So, thank you so much.
I also want to say, you know, thank you for your hard work and congratulations on your promotion, and it was very cute what you did to your daughter. Congratulations.
Just want to say congratulations again, special thanks to your family, and I did want to say one thing, the chief said you are the future leaders of the department, but I want to say you are already leaders of our community. Without you, we wouldn't have such a great community that we have, so you are already 100% spot-on, everyday leaders, 100%.
Thank you, guys. I think, you know, today is just emblematic of, you know, the sacrifices that you've made over the last nine years, the work that you've put into the city and the leadership that you've shown. Thank you again to your families. I can't imagine, I'm sure it is very difficult to, you know, know that you guys are out there putting your lives on the line for other people, so very appreciative of you and your families for what you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for everything that you do for our community. I find it incredible that you have worked midnights since you came to the city and having a family. I commend you. That's a lot of balance and act to do, and I commend you both, and you should be both of your achievements. Your hard work obviously shows, I'm looking at all the ribbons that both of you have.
Thank you.
I'll make this brief. Very proud of you. I hope you're proud of yourselves. I know your families are proud of you. We are very, very grateful that you are on our force, and as your chief indicated, you are the future. Thank you so very much. And thank your families so very much.
Don't feel badly.
Yeah, you don't have to feel bad. Happens all the time. Today, myself, the Fire Chief O'Reilly, Officer Knudsen, we came up with a few awards for above call and duty. I have a little thing I would like to read, if that's acceptable. Basically, we came up with meritorious award, Citizen Emerorious Award for actions that go up and beyond. Okay. I'm ready to formally commend and highlight extraordinary actions of Andrew DeHan, Matt Dehan, and Zachary Murray on Thursday, March 12th, 2025. What began as a routine day of track and field tryouts at the Allen Park High School quickly transformed into a critical situation that showcased their exceptional courage and quick thinking. On that day at approximately 4:11 PM, what should have been a normal day for these track and field coaches turned out to be something entirely different. As they were hosting their annual track and field tryouts at the Allen Park High School track, a female athlete, Allison Eckerson, had completed her timed run. Shortly after, she collapsed to the ground. The coaches responded immediately, checked on Alyssa. They realized her condition was deteriorating and could not detect the pulse. They worked together by starting CPR, attaining the AED, and calling 911, all while trying to calm and maintain the situation while all other student athletes were present. Their immediate and decisive actions undoubtedly made a profound difference. It is my firm belief that I had, if it had not been for their quick response and collaborative efforts during this highly stressful and unexpected medical emergency, the outcome for Alyssa could have been tragic. Alyssa was subsequently treated at Children's Hospital and has made a full recovery. The actions of Andrew Dehan, Matt Dehan, and Zachary Murray on this day went far beyond their regular duties as coaches. They exemplify selfishness, professionalism, and an unwavering commitment to the well-being of their students. I wholeheartedly recommend that these coaches, these three coaches, receive a citizen citation for materi, uh, materi, you know, I had it all day, I'm sorry. Materious service, in recognition of their heroic actions, which directly resulted in saving a life.
And from the Fire Department, while I don't have a beautiful speech like that, what I do have is a lifesaving award for the three gentlemen. Their use of their education in CPR, using a public AED saved a life. That's something that will stick with them and with this community for a very long time. That use of that AED is the first documented case in the city of Allen Park where a public device was used and saved a life, so that'll go down in history. So if you three would like to come up? So on behalf of the Fire Department, I am giving you, each one of you, a lifesaving award. Congratulations.
Gentlemen, the Police Department would like to present you with a meritorious award for each one of you, and I put the right up of each one as well, just in case you wanted it. You're welcome. I've never met any of you. Andrew? There you are. Matt? Zach? Thank you, guys. Can't say enough for that.
And gentlemen, you, please.
They're like, we want out of here.
Not getting away that easy.
Usually I will let the council members start, but I want to start this one. Simply because I know that when this first occurred, you did not want to be recognized. I know that was probably a very traumatic experience for you. Can't imagine having to go through that. But we are so very, very grateful for what you did. I know that you don't view yourselves as heroes, but feel so, so good about yourselves and what you did, and what you accomplished, and believe me, you deserve the recognition. It's those who don't seek it who most truly deserve it, and you deserve it. And I will now digress to my fellow councilmen.
I just want to say thank you for what you did. That is merit.
Meritorious.
Thank you. Deserving a merit. So, thank you for what you did.
As a teacher and coach, I just hope and pray, if I'm ever faced with that situation, that I take inspiration from you guys and react the way you guys did.
Thank you, guys, for staying level-headed, jumping in, because sometimes, you know, people don't know what to do or how to react, and Matt, I've known you many years ago, you were a supervisor of mine, and I know how you cared about our staff and how you jumped in and helped us as a supervisor, so thank you very much, gentlemen.
Just want to echo what my colleagues have said, and the mayor said, thank you for everything you've done, and thank you for being quick on your feet, and you deserve every bit of it. I know you may or may not feel that you do, but 100% do, and thank you.
What a bunch of jerks. Just kidding. I love you guys, you know that. My, I'm fortunate enough to call you guys my colleagues, my friends, known, you know, Hans my entire life. And I just, I can't help, I was tearing up up here thinking about it, and you guys know this better than anybody, that last year, the Allen Park High School community, we just went through a lot of tragedy. And because, because you guys were there and you acted on your training, you did the right thing, you know, we avoided one more tragedy, and I'm incredibly, incredibly thankful that you guys were there, and I'm incredibly thankful to call you guys my friends. Love you, guys.
As a parent and grandparent, I cannot thank all three of you. I think you go through your entire lifetime and never realize how many people you touched with your quick reaction, and I mean touched in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Officer Knudsen, he wants to introduce one more guest that's related to this, and I apologize for your last name, Hans. I'm sorry. Hans. Well, I hate saying someone's last name, but Officer Knudsen has someone to introduce, and it's related to this.
Thank you, Council. I have Alyssa and her family present that would like to come up and say a few things.
Please.
Yeah, Alyssa.
Dear Coaches Andrew and Matt Dehan and Coach Murray, it's really hard to put into words how thankful I am, but I'm going to try. What happened at track practice was not only scary, but traumatizing. I still don't remember much of it, but I know you were there, and I know that you helped save my life. Coach Andrew, you gave me CPR and used the AED without even thinking twice. Coach Zach and Coach Matt, you got the AED, called 911, and made sure everything happened fast. You kept everyone calm and made sure people were where they needed to be. You were all so brave and worked together without hesitation, and because of that, I'm still here. You didn't just help me, you gave me a second chance, a chance to be with my family, see my friends, and just live my life. There's no way I can thank you enough for that, but please know how much it means to me, and I'll never forget it. You are true heroes to me, and I'll forever remember you and what you did. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Meritorious.
Very emotional, but in a good way. A very good way. We will now move on to organizational business and the City Administrator's report.
Go for it, Tom.
So I'm going to start with something not related. So one of them individuals was my son. Very proud. He outshined me big time. I'm more than proud, I want to just say that on record. Thank you. I do have a report, by the way. Because of damage to the concrete on Manor Avenue between Wick and Moore from a severe thunderstorm last Saturday, the damaged road will now have to be removed and replaced by Zenega cement. It's an unfortunate circumstance, but at least they're stepping up to the plate and they're taking care of it for the city of Allen Park. Manor also between Leslie and Wick has been poured and will open soon. The east side of Manor between Moore and Malon is complete, and the contractor is now starting on the west side to complete that road. Savone Cement has completed the road construction on Marquis between Park and Caldwell. One half of Angelique from Park to Quant and Midway west of Reek are complete, and once cured, the other side will be poured. Road construction has begun on Inglewood. The road is currently being removed, starting at Allen, and will go to Quant. Later on, it'll go from Quant to Park. We're hoping to complete that section before school this year. MDOT just informed us that they will finish pouring the concrete on Southfield Road today, and all lanes will be open to traffic next week. Barring weather and testing. Let's start with that, that can change. The end of the reading program, Carnival, at the library is taking place on Saturday, July 26th, from 10:30 to noon. Please join Lemonade in the Shade at the Old Allen Park Theater Site this Thursday from 9:00 to 2:00. The library will be closed for removal of old furniture on Friday, August 22nd, through Labor Day, and then they will be closed for the installation of the new study rooms on Wednesday, August 27th and August 28th. The Fire Department, along with the Water Department, are adding reflective tape to the fire hydrants that they paint, so that they are better seen at night, just in case anyone was wondering what was going on there. Allen Park is hosting the U.S. Roller Hockey Championships, starting Wednesday, tomorrow, July 23rd, through Monday, August 4th. Every day is booked from morning to night. We have teams, I think I seen from Florida, we had teams from Hawaii even, we have, South America, Canada, so this is something, if you're interested, it'd be kind of neat. They got a really cool blue floor, if you haven't seen Parks and Rec's Facebook page, it's really neat. 2025 inductions of Julie Goodwin and Randy Watalla, thanks, into the Allen Park Sports Hall of Fame is at noon on August 2nd at Roosevelt and Allen. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept and file.
Motion.
By Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Well, I was writing it. Are there any comments or questions?
What would the cost be to go into the roller per day? Kyle, do you know how much? Oh, there's not, it's free?
Oh, not yet.
Oh, okay. And you can go as early as 6:30 AM.
Thank you.
I have a question. Southfield at Allen, on the, it would be the northbound lane, it looks like either somebody drove through it, where they poured brand-new concrete, or rained at a number, so there may be a delay, because I bet that's going to need that entire slab, will need to be redone.
Most likely, if it's, if it's not just surface, if it's surface, they can grind it out, but I don't know. Drove through it like while it was fresh? Oh, it has to be redone.
A little bit of spackling from Ace Hard.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or is accepted. I will add one thing on there, it's kind of related to the roller hockey championships. There is a concert on Wednesday taking place. The concert normally takes place in the community center parking lot, which is going to be jam-packed with cars. It is going to be taking place at the Old Movie Theater Site, so we have a nice venue there, and some grass, and close to restaurants, so that's where the concert will be this Wednesday. Now we will open public comments. You may come up and speak. All we ask is that you give your name and the street on which you live, please do not provide the full address, and the only other thing we ask is that you keep your comments civil. Since no one is coming forward, we will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda, which tonight consists of claims and accounts in the payroll report under purchasing, and a licensing and permit for curbside painting by Abby Ray. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius. Support by Mr. Schlack. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Resolutions. Resolution one is to approve the outdoor event application for the Stretery Street Fair Parking Lot Party. The event will take place on Friday, August 1st, and Saturday, August 2nd, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM on both days. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wirtzbacher.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Comments or questions? Basically, the Stretery, which is located across Southfield, is going to host a street fair parking lot party in their parking lot, and that will include yard games, live music, and food trucks. Hearing no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution two is to approve the outdoor event application for Metro Vapor Plus Spooky Summer Vendor Event in their parking lot on Saturday, August 24th, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schlack, second by Ms. Nick. I should start a chorus. This one is an outdoor event from Metro Vapor Plus on Ecorse Road. They want to host a spooky summer vendor event in their parking lot, which will include local vendors, excuse me, with a variety of goods. They provided a flyer and a layout. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution three is to approve an expenditure not to exceed $13,939 to C.E. Rain's company for street evaluation services. to C.E. Raines Company for Street Evaluation Services from account two zero two four seven nine eight twenty triple zero and two zero three four eighty-three eight twenty triple zero. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Any comments or questions?
Tom, if you, if you wouldn't mind just giving us a rundown of what we talked about in the work session.
So, this is regarding rating the roads. It's a van truck. I think this one's a van. It drives down every street in the city, and it has cameras and sensors and many good gadgets that I do not have. It will analyze every road for the cracks and the spalling and the different situations that determine if a road needs to be replaced, if it's in good condition, bad condition, average condition. Typically, it's three different colors: yellow, red, and green. Green you wanna see. Do the whole city every three years. This way, you can pick the roads that need to be done. It's not only done by this, but this is a starting point. There's other factors that we figure out what roads need to be done as well on top of it. It also helps us with our roads asset management plan, therefore giving us money and different avenues to fix and repair our roads.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution four is to approve the contract with HED for architectural services with cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars. The cost to be shared by the Allen Park DDA and the city of Allen Park with funds from account one zero one one seven two eight twenty-three triple zero. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wurtzbacker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. I don't know. Tom, do you want?
Here you, Matt. Me?
Let's have Matt come up.
Pick an aisle seat next time.
This, this is the very first step in figuring out what potentially we can do with this property, as looking at it as possibly a public square, public park. This is getting architectural drawings as a concept to start the ball rolling. Having to also get a design for DTE to figure out if they can relocate the electric lines on the property to do anything with. Therefore, we need to have this done to even have use of this property for anything. And when this is done, this will come in front of council and work sessions and different things, and we will have more formidable things on how we wanna move further with this. But we have to have this first to even start the conversation.
And just to clarify, because I don't think it's mentioned anywhere, this has got to do with the old theater property. So, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. Resolution five is to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation to adopt a proposed zoning ordinance text amendment to Division ten subdivision two to include motor vehicle wash establishments, car washes, as a regulated use in the C six A Fairlane Green District with review from the city attorney. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schleck, second by Mr. Wurtzbacker. Mr. Baker?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So, this was brought to the Planning Commission as an application from the developers on the Phase Three site up on the hill. They're developing the vacant property north of the target lot. And so, what they wanna do, one of the proposed businesses up there is a car wash, so they wanted to, did a text men, text amendment to the ordinance to allow it as a regulated use. So, it'd be handled just like any other regulated use. It's a special approval once it has got a planning commission, and then it comes before Mayor and Council again. So, this is just a text amendment to the ordinance.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved. And because tonight we are going to go into closed section, we will have the elected official comments first. And one of my electors has disappeared, so we will start with Mr. Schleck.
Oh, well, just wanted to say, I think we said a lot already today. It was very. Definitely needed tissue. So, thank you again for those heroic actions for what they did. We all saw and heard, and I don't know if there's any more that could be said about that. I also wanted to thank again the police department for those promotions, the fire department for presenting, and the police department presenting those awards. Mixing both of these up, but. Oh, Street Fair's coming up. I hope to see everyone there. I know that's on everyone's mind too, so that's that. And looking forward to see Southfield and One Piece again, and hopefully, I think everyone will be jumping for joy for that. So, I look forward to seeing everyone. I will be volunteering myself on Saturday for four hours, so. I look forward to talking to anyone that wants to come up or needs help finding wherever they want to find and what they could shop for, and give them recommendations once I talk to a lot of these wonderful vendors that I'm sure will have a lot of good things to be selling, so. Thank you, and that I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd?
I just wanna just say real quickly, I think that the importance of giving this award out this evening to the three gentlemen is, is, it's a, it's another reminder for everybody that it's always good to have your first aid CPR certifications, 'cause you never know what kinda situation you're gonna put in. As coaches were required to do that for just this exact reason. And it's, in those situations, seconds matter. And with that, I also wanna extend a thank you. I know, I believe the, at least part of the crew that responded to Alyssa was here in the back this evening. You know, saving a life, it, it takes a lot of people. So, the, our coaches responded, they stabilized, or they put the AED on, and they did what they needed to do until we were able to get our paramedics there that were able to, you know, further save lives or get into the hospital and to save a life. So, huge appreciation for our firefighters for, for doing that work, and appreciation to the chief too, who I know with this event has been pushing and has been putting the work in to make sure that we have AEDs in every single city building, which I think is, you know, this was the first time that an AED's been used in the city of Allen Park to save a life, but I, I sincerely doubt it is the last. So, just appreciation to everybody from the coaches all the way up to the chief for the actions that they've taken to make sure that we citizens are safe. So, thank you.
Mr. Wurtzbacker?
Thank you to Chief Phelps for building his department for the future and setting things up, and he appears to really have a plan in place for change of leadership on down the line. Next, I've. Was really taken when I first heard about the young lady and the coaches and how their fast response when it first happened. But be sitting here tonight, and you can just feel the emotion in the air, and looking at the parents, they're internal grateful to everyone involved. I hope nobody has to ever go through that again. On a positive note, to shift gears, I stopped by Touch a Truck, and the DDA, Downtown Development Authority, Ben Hughes, Kim, and Jamie, they did a remarkable job on putting that event together. When I was there, I went up to the DDA tent, and Kim and Jamie were there, and, you know, they, they were just bubbling over, because at that point, they knew that they had over five hundred kids. And I talked to Ben a little bit earlier today, and it's estimated that well over twelve hundred kids and their parents showed up for that event. And there, there were a lot of trucks, and I mean, i- if I would've been an eight-year-old kid again, I would've been in hog's heaven, you know? To be able to climb in that Tonka truck that was leg-sized, you know, and toot the horn. Next, it's been alluded to earlier about the visitors that will be in town for the twenty twenty-five state wars for the inline hockey. And, you know, they're coming from everywhere. I, I've looked at the schedule, and I find it incredible. I, I spoke with some of the area restaurants and encouraged them to get flyers or any kinda handout to get it over to the community center. When Kyle Carr informed me that the age group was like from twelve to like seventeen, I thought, my lord, you know, our restaurants really can capitalize on this. You ever try to, you ever try to fill the gut of a fourteen-year-old athlete? It's non-stop, you know? So, we need to jump on that. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Ms. Nick?
I just wanna give a shout-out to Inner City right down there on Allen. They are celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary of being with our city. So, I didn't realize they'd been here that long, but yep, seventy-five years. And then, like again, the Street Fair again, August first and second, and Kiwanis is doing a baby contest, so you can enter your little one, up to three years old, and so stop by their booth, and you can vote on babies. It's the first time they've done it. They picked up the idea from, I think it was Wind Out of Trenton. They raised quite a bit of monies by doing that, so they are gonna try it out. And then, oh, the Streetery on this weekend is doing Halloween. They've decorated everything Halloween, so they're doing like a spooky Halloween this weekend, so stop by there. Thank you, and everybody have a safe night.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius?
I just wanna say, you know, it's, I think, the emotions of what we experienced, you know, in, in society today, when we're faced with so much negativity on a daily basis, it just kinda warms the heart, and I think that's what touched so much emotion in regards to just the experience of having three coaches, you know, save a life of a, of a young girl, not only their athlete, but the daughter of parents and anyone who's, you know, has experienced as a parent, your worst nightmare, and just the, the actions of those three individuals in doing what they did and reacting, and our first responders and everything else. You know, it, it, it really sheds light on the situation in regards to, no matter how much negativity there is, you take away from an experience like that, you know, and some might consider it to be a, 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 a simple action, but in reality, you know, it's a life-saving action, a life-changing action. You know, and it's a bond that that young lady will have with those three coaches, with that family in general for the rest of their lives. So, again, quoting ex-council member Charles Blevins, it's about remaining positive and focusing on those positive actions, like what we just heard from tonight and experienced tonight. And, you know, just kind of having them alleviate some of that negativity that we're faced with daily. Thank you for your time. That I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
I, I don't wanna say, I don't know how to say this. I had a situation back in the seventies. Times have changed with the medical event from way back when. A friend of mine, classmate, didn't get the help that he needed. I was a, I was either second or third grade, so. I wanna say thank you to everybody that was involved, police, fire, school staff. Like I said, times definitely have changed. I need to say thank you to the DDA, which is headed by Ben, because of music, what is it called? Music in the Park? Street Music in the Street. I was at the concert last week, I think, yeah, it was last week. And I'm, I had a good fun time. I know every, pretty much everybody there had a fun time. And that's all I'm gonna say. Thanks. Let's get to the back.
Mike, you weren't here at the start. Did you have anything to say?
I'll say something real quick. Thank you, Mayor, about the three gentlemen up here receiving the citizen's citation for meri- Can't say it either.
Meritorious.
Same thing that police chief said. Really, my, my son played years at Allen Park Track. I'm not one bit surprised at what these three did, 'cause that's all I ever did was hear their names after practice, after this, that. And I believe all three were AP alumni also. So, when you have people like that in their element they grew up in, they're very confident. They make choices like that. They probably didn't even hesitate to go to the, they probably passed it a thousand times and knew where it was. That is one thing I love about Allen Park Public Schools. You see people like Dan grow up here, and now he's a teacher here. You know, it's, it's, here's three more. It's, it's just an excellent, excellent school district. And I'm not doing a plug. Remember, I went to Cabrini, which is great too. But I am proud, but those three, those names don't surprise me, 'cause they were like superheroes to my son for so many years. Now they are to another young lady and a whole team of track, and God bless them. God has a plan. And thank you all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Thank you, Mike. I will keep this brief. Tonight, we should be extremely, extremely proud of everyone who works in our city, works in our schools. We've got some of the finest employees around in this city. We've got some of the finest department heads who do everything they can to develop their employees and instill confidence in them, the same confidence that those coaches had. I can't tell you how emotional what happened at that high school was. In another meeting completely associated with the city, a gentleman who regularly attends came in and spoke during attendees' comments about what happened, and he was in tears. I think the tears were just happiness that some people were in the right place at the right time and knew what to do. And I think it would behoove all of us to perhaps, at some point, take a course so that if we're ever in a situation where somebody needs our help, we have some clue as to what needs to be done until the other forces get there. With that, I will call for a motion to convene into a closed session for the purpose of pending litigation with the Allen Park retirees as permitted under MCL fifteen point two six eight E. Roll call, vote. Motion. Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by, I'm sorry, this. By Mr. Valerius. Finger's pointing. Thank you. Much clearer. Roll call, vote, please.
Madam Chair, I have a motion by Lloyd, supported by Councilman Valerius, that we should convene into closed session for the purpose of pending litigation with the Allen Park retirees as permitted under MCL one five point two six eight subsection E. Shall we convene Councilman Barr?
Yes.
Councilman Net, or Councilman Net?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
And Councilman Wurtzbacker?
Yes.
The yeses have it, we shall convene.
Thank you.